Start this meeting. It's called an order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Welcome all for coming, thank you. Entertain the motion regarding the approval of tonight's agenda.
We move to approve tonight's agenda as posted.
Sorry. Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to announcements, we have attached the flyer that was put out by the chamber, is that correct?
Rathrum Chamber.
The Rathrum Chamber in support of the levies.
And then the Idaho Public or Parent Rights in Education.
Which are also in support of our levies. Moving on to student accolades, the IHSAA gave our Timberlake High School So the girls' basketball team, the sportsmanship award. So that's huge and excellent. Thank you to Katie Walton and Rain Everland for their great leadership up there at Timberlake.
And Mr. Matt Miller is their coach.
And Mr. Matt Miller, awesome coaching. Alright, we'll move on to public input. Just as a reminder, these board meetings are our business meetings that are held in public, they are not public board meetings. The board is governed by Idaho Code Title 33, Chapter 5, IDAPA, and follows our district policies. And the time for public input is provided for the public to express themselves to the board. It is not time to engage with the board, nor is it a time for questions and answers. The board in its discretion may ask clarifying questions to ensure it understands the input provided. However, no discussions or conversations take place. It's my understanding we have one person. Is Luke Emerson here? Okay, if you'd like to come up to the podium and address the board. Or were you just wanting your emailed your email to be your public input?
Yeah, I can either read it for you guys or you can just distribute it out, whatever's easiest for you.
Well, we've all received it. It is attached to the agenda. So if you're, if you don't want to come and speak to us, that's fine. We'll make sure that this is entered into the record.
Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome. Did you all have a chance to read the email?
I did.
Okay. Moving on to reports, we have the financial report. Financial report. I can't speak. The monthly budget status report for February. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns about what was presented?
Can I just, one thing we talked about that we, it was in there last month too, but down at the bottom where it shows year-to-date revenues and then year-to-date expenditures and it kind of shows what percentage of our budget we've expended. It looks like it's higher this year than it has the last couple of years. Look at that. We're at sixty-five percent as opposed to forty-eight percent. And that is because of that $2.8 million move out of our fund balance into the capital projects line item. Just so that you're aware of why there's that looks a little different.
Well, there's, yeah, there's an eleven percent, a little under eleven percent increase. No, nine percent increase, if I can do that. On expenditures, and you're saying that's based on the capital improvement?
That $2.8 million that we moved out of the general fund and into the, that, it's all line item.
Okay, and our, well, but our revenues are down about four percent.
It's just a little bit out of whack with the other two, so I just wanted to make sure that. I meant to highlight that last month and I forgot, so I wanted to make sure you pointed that out.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. You are welcome. So no questions on the monthly budget status report? Moving on to the consent agenda. We have the meetings from the previous minutes, the minutes from the previous meetings, the minutes of the subcommittee meetings to be accepted, HR items, and regular and special bills. Does anybody have any questions, comments on the minutes from the previous meeting? Anything on the subcommittee meetings to be accepted? Anything on the HR items that were presented? Anything on the regular and special bills? I do have a couple of questions. Chelsea, I'm not sure if you'll be able to answer these.
I can try.
I'm excited. We spent fourteen thousand four sixty-eight eighty-three at Ednetics for tech card readers and February twenty-twenty-three phone services. Do you know roughly what we spent actually on the tech readers as opposed to the phone services? Because I thought we'd already bought all the readers that we needed for the buildings.
I don't know the difference in that. I could look and find it for you. But I know we had kind of spoken, you had an idea for them.
So we ordered those once the board gave the bill. They just are coming in.
Okay.
So that's why the bill is just getting paid.
Okay, and then what I'm wondering is, from this point going forward, if each memmoed could have its own amount. So like the tech could have its amount, the phone service could have its amount. Can you break that apart?
For Ednetics?
Yes, well, for all of them. Because it's really challenging when there's a glump of, you know, it's for this, 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 and then it's some large amount to not actually know what we spent.
What the line items are for each thing.
Yes, if you can break that apart, that would be much appreciated.
So the bill list represents, we send one check out for maybe multiple items. Some of the bills, there can be fifty, a hundred invoices to that one check. So it could get fairly lengthy.
Well, we usually don't have fifty to a hundred items listed. But like on this one, we have tech card reader and then February phone service. So in my mind, it would seem reasonable to have two amounts listed.
Well, we list by check. So we wrote one check, so we would have to have this fifty percent of the check listed here and fifty percent was there. But some of the line items, like the BMO credit card, that's, it's a thousand items. It would get.
Correct, and you've started to provide the breakdown of which funds are actually being utilized for BMO, which the board asked for and that was able to be provided. As sort of a compromise and not necessarily having to see, you know, a single item purchased.
Yeah, Chair Thompson, I'm just saying that on some of the bills, there's, there can be several invoices that comprise one check. Multiple on there, so this, this list would get exponentially longer and the board, that's your there, we can look how the system would best represent that. Anet is taking this, the main data from the invoice and sort of manually doing this. We'd have to see how Skyward might be able to generate that data. It would get very long.
Would there be a certain bills that are, that we have every single month that we, I could make sure, and that one in particular and this one in particular, I pull those into the line items for you?
Well, I mean respectfully, like you've got tech card readers and you've got phone services. Our phone service should be pretty much a standard monthly expenditure. I don't know what that is because we get a laundry list of all the bills. So if you've got the phone service as one line item and then the other amount should be the tech readers, that makes complete sense.
Unfortunately, I think that the situation is it's not, it's going to be the ones that aren't the typical expenditures on a monthly basis, I think is going to be the.
Like we have, that we reimbursed Lakeland Senior High eighteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. It says reimbursement for athletic officials slash per diems. So are the per diems for the athletic officials or are they for something else, or?
So the per diems are for state. When they go to state and the kids have a certain amount of money that they can spend on food, so we give them the per diems. And where the schools provide the per diems and we reimburse the schools.
So the athletic officials, how much were paid? Because we seem to constantly be doing that, which is fine, but it's really hard to get an overall sense of what the expenditure is when there are two or three categories glum together. So that's, that's just my frustration. So if we could work on that, that would be great. And then I'm just curious, on the lodging for Day of the Hill, there's two amounts for the Grove Hotel. And it looks like we spent roughly sixteen hundred dollars for two days of hotels. Is that accurate?
That would be three rooms. How many rooms? Is it like two hundred dollars or?
Okay.
Like less than that?
Okay. Those are the questions. Thank you. Anybody have any other questions?
Where did you see that? I didn't see that, I saw the other ones, this one here, but I didn't see the other AI.
Oh, because I paid for all of them. Scroll down to the bottom. It's the last, I'm sure you're gonna keep going. Oh, there, yeah, they're both lodgings. So if you paid for your lodging.
Yeah, I paid for everything. Oh, okay. I'm gonna check my card. Yeah, because I had to give them my card when I showed up and they charged my card, so. Let me make sure they're not double charged.
Alright, so if there's no other comments, questions, or discussions for the consent agenda items, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
I'll make you approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to old business, we have the superintendent follow-up. Did everyone have a chance to review that? Okay, seems like we had some pretty unanimous perspectives from parents on vape detectors and metal detecting ones.
And a large turn over of ours. And a number of responses from parents. And just to give the board some kudos, I've had a couple of people reach out and say that, that they're more inclined to participate in our surveys because the board has done such a good job of paying attention to what people are saying. So I think people feel like it's not a waste of their time to give us input, so.
Great, that's good.
Just share that with you.
And I do appreciate the spreadsheet that THS Treasurer, Assistant Treasurer put together on the prom. It's good to have that insight and understanding.
Yeah, that was really helpful.
Yeah, it was great.
See the comparison here to here.
I do have a question on the org chart.
Yes.
Who oversees the principals?
I do.
Okay, so there's no line from you to them.
I just need like a magic line that goes to everybody.
Yes, you do.
Just an umbrella.
Just because they're sitting right under the assistant superintendent. So I was curious if, if there was, I mean, because I know there was a lot of delegation previously, so I just thought that was cute, for lack of a better word.
Would you like Rebecca to try to figure out how to, our org chart is getting so full.
It is, makes me wonder if we need maybe like an eight by fourteen.
I did shift everything down. We'll tell it. But I can fix that.
Does anyone have any questions on the follow-up information we were provided with? Mr. Quimby, you're awfully quiet tonight.
I'm just taking it all in.
Okay. Okay, we do have an action item on the twenty-three, twenty-four school calendar that we are modifying with respect to Christmas break. And they also, which I'm sure you all picked up on, added elementary to trimesters instead of semesters with the high school being on semesters.
That starts next year.
Yeah.
We were able to, my biggest concern in doing that was having our elementary kids not in school because teachers are working on report cards on a day that the secondary kids were in school. But we were able to make all of those end of quarter, end of trimester days match. So our elementary kids are out at the same time that the secondary kids are out.
So you've given us three options. If we had only two, we could flip a coin.
But you have three. Cordillane has adopted the, I think it's our fifth option one that's on here for you, where they added that Friday, December twenty-second, as the first day of Christmas vacation. To give a little bit more time between end of school and Christmas. It is, I think it's important just to keep in mind that if we are significantly different from Cordillane, we have teachers who have kids who go to school here and they, parents who work in Cordillane or vice versa. We, they work for us, but they live in Cordillane. And I just want to make sure we're not creating a situation where our teachers can't spend Christmas break with their kids because we're so, so different, so.
Post falls?
Post falls right now is, still has the later break, so they would still be in alignment with, they're still in alignment with Cordillane. Like the way Cordillane changed theirs.
With the exception of that Friday.
With the exception of that Friday.
So on the number two option, they get out on Thursday and they go back on a Wednesday. So it's not even two full weeks.
And those, when you do that, are hard attendance weeks. Kids just don't come back. The following year, twenty-twenty-four, December twentieth would be our last day of school if we use our, what we have done in the past. That's, that's been the latest that we've gone, is the twentieth. We, we went late earlier than we typically would have this, this year and last year. But, so that would line up with that option one. Instead of kind of going back and forth between late and early.
So are we still doing student-led conferences from high school and high school?
We're going to, we're, they did, they did them a little bit differently this year because the feedback from parents has not been favorable. We're actually going to survey all of our parents. Again, just to check in even with the elementary. My sense is that the recommendation will be that we go back to a more traditional spring conference.
Okay.
Time, but we do want to survey the parents and get their input.
Perfect.
The other change to the calendar is the feedback from the staff after the two in-service days at the beginning of October was that it's, two is too many. It's too much all at once. And so they asked to just do one. Secondary teachers in particular really don't like having the kids out of school the two days. They would prefer to have access to their kids. So the calendar also represents that change. So there's just one curriculum day in October instead of two.
So it looks like option three would be significantly out of step with what the other two districts are looking at, even though it loads more time on Friday.
Yeah, significantly.
So maybe we really are down to two.
Maybe we are. Yeah, because that one, there's actually ten days between the last day of school and Christmas day.
Yeah, right.
Just a lot of time.
So what is your recommendation for these calendars that you've provided?
My recommendation would be option one, so that we align for families between the three districts here and K-Tech. I just, I worry that the shorter weeks, that, you know, getting out on Wednesday or coming back on Thursday, that our attendance won't be great. And so when you're missing a lot of kids, teachers hesitate to start in the new content. And I think by adding that Friday, it gives us what the parents were asking for, which was more time between the end of school and when Christmas Day actually landed.
Input, lots, pretty colors, I mean. Momma, do you have any input?
No.
Okay. Right, well.
What do most parents want, which option?
They, they, they just requested more time between, they wanted the earlier vaca, they wanted the earlier one because they wanted more time between the end of school and when Christmas landed. They felt like getting out on the, having the last day of the twenty-third, that they, there was no lead up to the holiday for them.
Now, the staff weighed in saying that they actually liked the calendar the way it was. And I guess some people have also commented that if we change this significantly, they've already made their plans. So we could be disrupting their plans. I don't know that it would be a significant amount of people, but that is something we need to consider if we get too crazy and wild and go with option three.
The other thing for K-Tech kids to remember, if we go with option three, it's so vastly different from what Cordillane and Post Falls are doing that our kids would be in school when the rest of their classmates aren't. And we'd have to really figure out what we're going to do for K-Tech kids because they would, there's not much overlap.
Okay.
Between the two vacations.
That's a pretty good point because you got significant numbers in the center involved down there.
Right.
I don't like option two, so that's my input.
You don't like option two?
Okey-dokey.
And we're not going to do three, so that leaves one.
Exactly. Precisely thought.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Dave, do you have any thoughts or comments? I see the wheels.
I don't care really, I mean, I do, but I think we should do it more towards the patrons, what they want.
Okay.
They're the ones paying the bills.
This is true. Any further discussion?
I know we accept the superintendent's recommendation for option one calendar.
For the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year? Thank you.
Right.
Great.
I would step that up.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We tabled the prom locations for the high schools. They've come back with their prom locations. Looks like they want to go to the Red Lion Inn.
Templin's Inn.
Templin's Inn, thank you. You're welcome.
Post falls?
Yes. So we do need to take action on the sit-ins, so I'll entertain a motion for the prom locations. Unless we need to have a conversation. Sorry. Just assumed we didn't.
I'm ready, I'm good.
Okay, well, did you want to? Okay.
I move to approve the prom locations for THS and LHS to Templin's, Red Lion, and Post Falls.
What's that going?
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Further in discussion is the building exterior projects update. I would like a little understanding why we need to bump out Spirit Lake and Apple. I mean, it is the recommendation of Emmerich. So I don't know if Brian or Mr. Ferriola can speak to that.
Yeah, Chairman Thompson, this is the board, Superintendent Arnold. We have Corey Lowman here and Luke Neal. Both from Emmerich. Mike's also here to support to talk about sort of the progress that we've had with the project and the reason that some of the moving forward with Spirit Lake and Apple would be difficult.
Okay.
The biggest challenge with that is that since we had ordered, you know, we'd started sort of the process at Latham Middle School and ordered the doors with another contractor. And so that was in place, and we ordered that earlier, a few months ago. Right now, if we were going to order doors, they just, they simply won't come in time. There's just, there's still issues with lead times on getting supplies and materials for construction. And so, you know, there's no reason to start ripping into the building if you're not replacing those doors and windows in the sit-in all at the same time. But all that, Mr. Lowman, sort of describes sort of some of the progress we're at and some of the challenges we're facing on that item.
Thank you. I'd be remiss if, since it's a first opportunity I've had to address the board, if I can express our gratitude for Emmerich Construction, for the opportunity to be your construction manager, general contractor. It's an absolute honor to get to work on projects like this where, you know, repairs and things get pushed down the road and opportunities to really do some fantastic improvements and some things that can really impact the community, really extend the lifeline of these buildings. This is phenomenal opportunity, and so we appreciate that so much. And beyond that, I am here to promise you that we will, we will take that and we will make you very, very happy and impress you along the way. That's our guarantee. So with that, there's a few things, two parts, construction manager part, general contractor part, right? Our first part is, as a CM, it's our job to understand and advise you on your projects. Make sure we understand what the mission is. Make sure we understand the budgets and all of the pieces of the puzzle that have to do with that. And so our assessment from hazardous materials, from what are we really dealing with from a material standpoint? How bad is the conditions of the buildings? We've had some good news and we've had some bad news. Good news is no real hazard materials, hazardous materials issues with an exception of just a very limited amount of drywall tape in the oldest part of Apple. So that's, that's fantastic news. These things take time, of course, for us to analyze and figure out. With that said, we've really focused on Lakeland Middle School as kind of our test case. It's the largest school of the three that will be dealing It's the largest school of the three that we'll be dealing with, has the three most different conditions. Between the siding conditions, the window conditions, there's several different window types from aluminum to hollow metal. And so those complexities have allowed us to really dial in and understand what we're doing and to try to create a standard that we can push to the other schools in order to meet your budget.
Okay.
Obviously, inflationary issues, all those buzzwords that are out there, right?
Yeah.
I don't need to get into them, but they are real and they're, and they're very difficult for us to deal with in the construction industry. Our goal is through Lakeland, by doing it first and focusing on it this summer, if that's what the board will approve, we can really dial in on each of these details and how we're going to do it and drive that price down. So next summer, we can, we can drill out on Spirit Lake and Athol and get that budget dollar down. So two, three dollars a square foot on our siding finishes. We can get those prices down because we figured out exactly how to wrap those windows, how to install them, how to make sure that our terminations on the sidings are just right. It's a lot to undertake. And we do about two hundred million dollars a year in K-12 construction, so not a small amount. If we were to undertake all three of these schools, we would have taken the glaze started about twelve months ago in the pre-construction. So I feel very confident in how far we've come in the short period of time we've been working with Mr. Wallace and his team. But on the C M side, and we're in the business of building stuff, so trust me, I'd love to do all three schools this summer. But on the, on the C M side, I have to advise that the best path for the district to make the best decision for these buildings is to make sure that we're doing it one step at a time. And that first step is to really dial in our finishes, really dial in exactly what we're doing with our processes and make sure Lakeland is, is perfect. And then pushing that forward to the other school, two schools next summer. Again, with that, my plan, in hopes with approval from you guys, is to go ahead and order all of these materials at once. We'll warehouse them in a bonded warehouse, so we'll get that. Actually, we'll be ordering these materials with about six other schools that we're doing materials at the same time. So we'll order all that material, we'll set the materials aside for Athol and Spirit Lake in a bonded warehouse till next summer and get that savings before the inflation hits us for next year.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
If that makes sense. It's a lot of words.
No, so what I hear you saying is you're going to buy everything all at once.
Yeah.
You're just not going to be able to do the work product until you, you want to do one school, see how that ferries out.
Yeah.
And then you can apply that to the next two schools the following year.
If it pleases the board, we, we have a board we've prepared to show you where we're headed as far as the finishes are concerned, again, with a focus on Lakeland Middle School. One of the big issues that you've had at all three schools is really just a siding all the way down throughout. So as snow accumulates, rain issues, those types of things, you're getting some drywall and you're getting some of those issues that typically happen with the older schools. Lakeland's special in that it has currently several different mediums.
Right.
So our goal is to continue with that kind of theme, only to modernize it.
Okay.
And bring it up to speed. So, and add some texture and some longevity and again, really do something. We know how tight these dollars are and we know how important it is to make these dollars count. So the grayish color is a metal siding product, Miramar, metal siding product that has a fifty-year warranty. So again, we're looking for making these dollars really go long-term for us. So again, you'll see the four-foot siding all the way around. So if we get some snow accumulation, it's going up against metal, it's going up against a hard product. It's not going to be penetrating into the buildings again or causing us any issues. We're just going to be able to let it sit there, not worry about it or anything else. The tan product up above, and again, colors are to be determined, this is a schematic. I don't want to say we're, we're choosing colors, we're showing you an idea of products. The siding is a diamond coat product. It's a synthetic product that is also pre-painted and comes with a twenty-year warranty. So this is already a pre-finished siding product that we'll install and it won't need to be painted for twenty years. No, no, other than just cleaning and traditional upkeep, we won't need to be budgeting for painting or any of that type of maintenance on this facility for twenty years. Okay? And then our plan is to completely strip down all of the C M U and brick-type products, hard, hard medium, get it down as far as we can and then do a coating, a stripping, coating, and then repainting all of that with the proper paint. There's been several different types of paint that have been used over time. The stuff on top seems to be right. The stuff that's down much lower doesn't seem like it was probably the right product at the time to be using. So we're going to get all the way through that and re-prep and paint all of that properly. Along with that, we're expected to switch out seventy-five percent of the windows. One of the things we did do is we had a window rep come in and inspect all of the windows with Architects West. And we've assessed about seventy-five percent of those windows. So we'll replace about seventy-five percent of those windows, low-e glass, phenomenal energy efficiency, which will be great. It's really going to make the school look fantastic and allow it to last as long as it needs to last.
So if you don't mind me asking, what about the other twenty-five percent of the windows?
The other twenty-five percent of the windows are great.
Okay.
No water issues, no health issues that we could see and are fine to leave in place. It'd just be spending money for no reason to replace those windows. The other two schools, we're intending to replace a hundred percent of the windows and, and the doors as part of our budgets.
Okay. What is the material that the siding is made out of? Is it?
It's a composite of wood and cement.
Okay, so like a Hardy board?
Like a Hardy board.
Yeah, okay.
And, and all the siding materials will have a color of some sort?
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with Architects West through Mr. Wallace and, and the board to determine what the colors would be at all three schools.
And I've emailed the principals, asked them to ask their teams what they want, and I haven't gotten feedback from Spirit Lake so far.
Okay, good. We'd like to hear that a lot of comments.
We're in the building business, not the picking colors business. We're happy to accept whatever you'd like to do.
Well, I guess we should look at the, if they're choosing, they should look at the colors they offer in this material. Because they have a.
Yeah, I think Spirit Lake wanted gray and blue, sort of blue for the trans.
Yep.
School colors, I think, and then sort of a gray for the main siding, so we'd have to see how that fits. But that was the feedback we got from Shine.
Do we have that in a PDF or something we can attach to our agenda so that the public can look at it if they're interested?
Yeah, we have the PDF.
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, we can, we can forward that.
Okay, yeah. We just give it some exam and she can put it on the agenda.
Sure.
So that way they can pull it up, thank you.
So, so again, you can see the extent of the work that we're going to, to make sure that we're, we're absolutely doing it right, we're getting you the right materials and putting them in the right places. And I never, I never love to come to a school board and say, we want to do less, not more. But in this particular case, I, I really think it's prudent to just pump the brakes a little bit, really knock this one out of the park, learn from it, and make sure that next summer, everything goes smoothly.
So I think what I heard you say, you're going to order materials, but the doors for the two northern schools would not come in because of the long lead time?
We're, we're looking at about six months lead time.
But they would be ordered?
But we'll go ahead and get them ordered.
Okay.
That'll be our next step here su- very soon, Luke?
Yes.
To be analyzing those doors and getting that going. Luke? To be getting that going.
The composite siding comes pre-painted.
Pre-finished.
Pre-finished. So you needed the colors for that before you ordered?
Yep.
And how soon are you planning on ordering?
I'm ready to order as soon as we get the colors selected. We're, we're holding the materials and the variety of colors for this project right now. So whatever decision is made on colors, we're ready to go and it's, it's readily available to get this school done. The other schools will be part of a production run from the factory. And that'll be ready in months.
These are materials that you have used before or currently using?
Yes, sir.
Anyplace we can see those, physically see them?
Want to take a trip to Oregon?
How far?
Or, or Southwest Washington. We have a ton of these products in, in place, but what I could do is provide you photos of those projects in references if you'd like them.
Would it be possible to get sample pieces?
Absolutely.
So we could at least?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, I really.
Samples would be nice.
Yeah.
Okay.
And in retrospect, probably should have brought those along, didn't think about it.
That's okay. I just appreciate the.
Yes, we absolutely will provide you some, some samples of both the diamond coat and the Miramar siding.
Is it possible for the board to see a color palette so that they kind of know what they could be choosing from for Lakeland Middle?
Yeah, no, it's our pleasure.
And the windows, you're going to order those, redo the installation of those or?
We, we may do the installation of those with our own crews. It depends on the timing, but we may also have the window manufacturer install these. We're looking at an aluminum window that's going to come in sticks, it'll be fabricated in Spokane. And then, so it may be that we have the window manufacturer come, do the window wraps for the flashings and then install the windows. We're, we're still working through that logistics. Again, on the C M, on the G C side, I want to install everything with my own crews. From the C M side, we have an obligation to make sure we're making best price choices for, for you and the district. So it'll be an analysis that we present to Mr. Wallace when the time comes.
Maybe some photos or brochures or something on the windows?
Absolutely. It's our pleasure.
Respectfully though, I mean, I want the samples and I think it's great that we have insight on the color scheme, but I also don't want to hold this project in another month for us to get the materials to be like, ooh, I like the neutral tones, or I, I mean, we, I would like to make sure that the principals are empowered to go ahead and make their choices and to make them within the next week or so because I am so tired of moving as nails days. This is just not acceptable. So if we can get them going with ordering the product and we get on board with understanding what the product is, I think that would meet.
Does Carrie have the palette?
No, I just, I know that they've been talking to staff. I just said, you know, give me a general idea of what colors you're going to go from there, and I haven't got feedback yet.
Well, I'd fire.
Thank you. And if you can get them the color palettes and then give them to us for the next meeting, that would be great.
Okay.
Start some Miramac, Miramac?
Are you okay with that, Mom?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. You always, you already know what the budget is and you're planning on ordering ahead in order to avoid replacement between this year and next year. What's your comfort level as far as the budget and doing all the project?
I feel very good right now. We, we started off, we started off with some real concerns because there were so many question marks about hazardous materials. How are the conditions of buildings? How are we going to go about it? What materials are we going to end up using? You know, we, we have some real concerns to start. We've narrowed what was a thirty percent budget concern down to five, six percent.
Oh, excellent.
So again, that's part of the, 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 the choice to come to you and say, hey, let's slow down a little bit. Let's really make sure we've got it right. Because I think we can figure out our efficiencies and figure out how to do this in a way that we can go do the two easier, quote unquote, easier schools in a much, much more efficient way and, and make these budgets work.
There's no, there's no C M U at the other schools, so you don't have to deal with that.
That's good. I like that.
Because that would be a bit of a challenge, right?
Yeah, the C M U at this school is going to be challenging.
Well, I'm glad here you're going to take it down if, start.
Get it refreshed, though.
Yeah. And at the end of the day, when we're, when we're done at the end of the summer on this school, it's, it's really going to have a lasting impression and something that's going to be there and be available for years to come. So feel good about that.
I do.
And then Chair, we can heat them in around a squat.
So again, the darker color is the metal siding product, so we've put it in a couple areas to really break things up. You don't necessarily need the metal siding up here, but it really breaks up the mediums and, and gives it some depth, some perspective. And then this, this lighter is the more traditional siding that you'd see on a house or on a, on a commercial building. And then the C M U.
Yeah.
The colors?
Yes, yes, it's the C M U. And I replaced them with the windows, of course.
They got, they got them on their website, all the colors.
Well, thank you very much. We do appreciate the opportunity.
It's an honor and a pleasure to be able to present to you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Cheers.
All right, moving on to the Red Cross Facility Use Agreement.
Wait, cool, real quick, is this an action item that we need to decide whether, that we're good with the waiting till it's twenty twenty-four for the other two buildings to be done?
It's not an action item, no. I mean, I'm not good with it, but I will accept it. And we'll just keep moving on.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, I, yeah.
We'll just be sitting here next year, it's like that.
Yeah.
Good afternoon.
Just saying.
Be like, God, we have more things to cover. Thinking last year.
I think we ordered the doors like a year ago, so.
We tried. Let's just not go there. I don't score sometimes. Let's move on to the action item of the Red Cross Facility Use Agreement. Does anybody have any questions? The Red Cross is asked to, okay, whoever put the information in, I don't know if anybody saw it, but under facility, every single letter is huge, so you have to scroll through eight hundred pages. So I don't know what happened there on the link. Yes, it was.
All I can see is an L.
Well, and I didn't realize it was an L until I scrolled and I saw the A, and then I'm like, oh, that's an L. I thought it was some funky border.
That's not how it came, so I'm like, just something weird happened in the formatting of the PDF.
Yeah, so in scrolling through it, I came through, I think, five of our schools. My understanding is they want the ability to utilize all of them.
I clicked on it.
Oh, I can see all of them. Yeah, there's a single one of them.
Oh, really?
I clicked on the side, it has Lakeland Senior High, Timberlake Senior High, Lakeland Middle, Timberlake Middle.
Athol, Bedding Keepers.
Tarwood.
Yeah.
Are there going to be a train around with it?
Yeah, but it looks like it's all within.
Yeah.
Yep, eleven.
Ten, eleven, yes, okay. I thought it was a very comprehensive facility use agreement. Bottom line is, is we're not liable.
Right.
That was what was most important. Does anybody have any other input or concerns on that?
No, when you, when you, frankly, I haven't looked all the way through it. When you say we're not liable, is there a whole harmless clause in it?
Yes. With that being said, if someone would like to pose a motion regarding the Red Cross Facility. With that being said, if someone would like to pose a motion regarding the Red Cross Facility Use Agreement?
I move that we approve the Red Cross Facility Use Agreement as presented.
Second.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to new business. First item is the snow closure for February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. I do need a motion regarding that. Unless anybody has things they need to discuss regarding it?
No, I do not.
I never should have mentioned it in my interview. Happened because I mentioned it.
You're just getting practice, that's all, coming out of your comfort zone.
I know. You should never challenge him because that's what he does. You need practice at that or I give it to you.
That's right. I move to approve the emergency snow closure for February twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Second, motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the snow closure for two hours on February twentieth, twenty twenty-three. We do need a motion regarding that.
To approve the snow emergency, emergency snow closure for two hours on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the supplemental resources for board consideration. Project Learning Tree. Assistant Superintendent Pazley provided this for us to review because there were some concerns. That it has embedded CRT. Teaching our students how to think, not what to think. So I don't know if y'all want to review it. I did do a cursory glance through it. That, I believe the primary book that is wanting to be utilized is for ages one through six. And I did look through it, there is one appendices called diverse learners, diverse needs, and it's simply about the special needs of children that are, uh, really find it. It wasn't anything that I was like concerned over, but it talked about, you know, how to address all learners, learners with cognitive or learning disabilities, neurodiverse learners, learners with limited mobility or motor function, learners who are blind or have limited vision, learners who are deaf or hard of hearing, and dual language learners. That's where they're addressing diversity. So, um, I don't know if I want to take a glance through that. But this is what they're wanting to use. And maybe with respect to Project Learning Tree, make it specific to just the trees and me. I don't know. But other than that, um, there wasn't too much. That's, people seem to have any concerns or, which is exciting. The athletic books or sports books, I guess I don't really like athletic books, for Lakeland High School. Those books are supplemental, but they are actually geared towards what's coming up further on down the agenda for a curriculum proposal. They're supporting that class. Just as information to share. Any further conversations or discussions on the supplemental curriculum?
Oh, yeah, it seems like there, um, there are quite a few concerns with this particular curriculum right here.
Project Learning, that's what's right here.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I haven't had time to look through that. Right, and it was here actually, I think, to ask for it.
I think Lynn just got this.
Okay.
Because what she hung up for was just the link. So she figured we'd have some, some review once, and so she provided it. So if there's no further discussion on the curriculum, um, the supplemental resources. If someone wants to bring forward a motion?
I would like to borrow that. There's no way we have time for any of us to look through that book quite yet. Can we table it again? And I would move to approve the rest of the, the list and table that one item, the Project Learning Tree.
Second.
Just having a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the administration's recommendation for science curriculum adoption. It appears, well, okay. I was a little confused. Because it's the science curriculum adoption, but it's the science-ELA adoption agenda. The quote's only for Amplify. So it is just science that we are wanting to adopt?
At this point.
At this point, okay.
We're still in the process of looking at ELA.
Okay, that's what I, okay.
But we just wanted to get upfront and start as we move through and narrow down to Amplify that, get this in front of you. And then hopefully Aprils will have the ELA, they'll narrow it down and have a decision on ELA. We're still teaching and doing the observations and we haven't narrowed down our focus yet.
Okay.
So just so you guys know, this does include all of the PD that would be provided for six years. The beauty of this program is it also includes all of the resources and the kits so that, um, a lot of the feedback, and we do have a native here that did some of the observations. It is, it is not talking about science, it actually is doing the experiments and they provide kits with all the experiments. So a lot of the science programs, it would be an additional cost in addition to the program because then you'd have to build those kits, but they actually provide it, which is really nice. So.
Wow.
So it kind of falls where we anticipated it would be, so this is for a six-year. Give or take numbers, Brian did a great job of kind of doing a set projected enrollment, so I worked with her of what we think projection teachers would be, students would be. Obviously, if there's some tweaks to that in the fall, we'd have to add some additional pieces, but.
Now, the kits that they provide with this quote, is that just for one year or is that for the full six years?
It's supposed to be for the full six years. I, that's why my question's into her because I wanted to writing that that's the case.
Okay.
So I asked the same question.
Okay.
But out of all of the companies, I will tell you, they have been very generous with if we wanted additional, multiple teachers wanted to teach from it. So instead of just sending us one to two samples, they sent us ten samples. I mean, they have been, she's very responsive every time I email her. So out of everybody, um, I have really enjoyed, similar to our math program, they have been very, very on top of it and responsive. So which, when you think about a partnership, that's really helpful.
Oh, it's huge.
So the other reason why we wanted to bring this forward and not wait until we were looking at ELA as well, one, the numbers might overwhelm you with two, but the second piece is when you think about doing an adoption, we will have PD happening. So then just trying to be really strategic about when we would offer teachers, um, science PD as well as then ELA PD. So do we piggyback some of this training at the back end of the school year and then do one of them at the front load at the beginning of the school year? So we're not overwhelming teachers with potentially two to four days of PD to utilize the programs. So we're trying to get out in front of that as well, so we're strategic in that, we're not overwhelming people.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Sometimes we have them. We try.
Do you have anything to say? Come on.
She enjoyed it.
The kids, what was the best thing is that the kids really enjoyed it. In, in the class, and they had a lot of fun with it. They were excited.
Good.
Yeah. Kids should be excited to learn.
They were very exuberant in one class, it was awesome.
So to the board, I do pose a question. If by chance these kits are only for one year, not for the six years of the, uh, purchase, does that cause us any concern?
If we get what?
Okay, well, my question to Lynn was, the kits that are being provided, is that for just one year or is it for six years? What I'm saying is if she comes back and says, no, it's only for one year, is that going to dissuade us from purchasing this curriculum before making an approval?
Your, your thinking is it's for six?
My understanding is it's six, but then after I read it, I went back and I emailed her and asked that question because I really just wanted it writing. I've had a few things where I, I, my assumption is I'm accurate, but then I emailed her back and just say, can you confirm that my assumption is accurate?
What were the costs differential?
Do we know what the kits?
So one of the things, yeah, um, with some of the kits, you might have some consumable type things like, if you're doing any sort of terrarium to, to kind of learn about why plants grow and how they grow, there might be soil. Each of our buildings has a building budget for instructional materials. So if, if they don't refill those kinds of things, that's already something that we take care of with our instructional budgets. I would anticipate that, that those costs are going to be ours. That would be my guess.
For the perishable items?
Yeah, what we're not going to have to replace are the scales and the types, those types of materials that this, that the kits would include, uh, any of the measuring materials and those kinds of things. But there may be
Some miscellaneous.
Just a cursory looking at the kits. It looks like roughly thirty-three thousand for the kits. For K through E, for all the grades total accumulated.
No. No.
Okay, well, my math could be off.
Um, yeah, when you look at kindergarten alone, the grade K kits are forty-seven thousand dollars.
No. Oh.
Yeah.
Price fruit, oh, you're right. My bad.
So then first grade kits are forty-seven thousand.
Okay.
Second grade kits, forty-three thousand.
Thank you for that correction.
Yep, so that means, so there's, every classroom has their own kit, so they're not having to share, which, um, you know, grade levels tend to teach the same thing at the same time. And so if we're having to share that, that causes a lot of, um, challenges for us. So it's truly a kit for every unit, every, every lab, for every classroom. So if we tried to replicate that, we would, on a round, we would probably pay more.
For sure. So that, oh.
Upwards, sorry.
Just scroll up just a little bit. So I was just looking at like the fourth grade investigation notebook bundle. One quantity per unit. And we're getting four hundred and fifteen. So that's the projection of students at that grade band for the whole district for one year.
But we, but this is a six-year, we, we only pay it one time. So it's a six-year print cost. So we pay everything upfront and then each year for six years, we get those consumables. And we don't pay again.
So the teacher guide, it says one quantity per unit. So is that one for every second grade teacher?
Mm-hmm. But it says quantity three, it says seventeen, there's only one teacher guide, so it would, if there were multiple teacher guides, so.
And then what about all the digital material that goes along with? The curriculum?
So that's up at the very top.
Yeah, have we had that, any clear?
We've had access. Everybody's been able to look at those pieces. We had, again, they gave us digital access right away. But pretty much everything that's in the textbook is in the digital piece as well.
One of the things the kids like the best about Amplify, when you ask them, is that, um, they have simulations where they get to, they actually get to kind of see how things move and do things in a, in a simulation on the, on the digital platform. Which they really enjoy.
What you have outlined is based on the projected enrollments at each grade level for next year. And obviously, that was very, fairly significantly, so year by year, we would have to add.
Yeah, Lynn padded it a little, each grade level she padded a little bit to try to account for that. The other thing, when we, um, when we have, um, done the six-year, uh, print upfront adoption, we get a total number, so even, so you may have a year where we have fewer third graders, but more fifth graders. And as long as our numbers all overall stay the same, there's no additional cost. We can shift things around a little bit.
And I did ask the question, if, you know, we're adding five more or six more books, is that a cost? I mean, obviously, if I'm adding thirty, then yes, but if it's a pretty, you know, I'm in a school number, they're good with just sending it, so. And she, you know, she said, we will work with you, so. And Brian did the math with the-
The price parical is guaranteed for the time of the auction.
But not even that, just giving some of those items for free. If I'm asking for five first grade, they're pretty good. She said they work with companies to, they're not trying to, you know, nickel and dime people.
But we pay for, so for example, when we did, um, the Journeys ELA adoption several years ago, we did the six-year print cycle like this. And, um, even though our numbers fluctuated across the grades, um, we never, we didn't pay more. They just allowed us to kind of maneuver within. So they, they definitely work with us.
Unless, so there was some significant uptick in numbers.
Right, yeah, if all of a sudden we had a hundred more second graders, that might cost us so many.
Well, that's my concern. You were looking at the enrollments a few minutes ago, I don't know. There's some difference, obviously, from-
Yeah. Well, they said that they padded it a little bit, just so that if there is an influx, it's not, it's still covered.
Yeah. Yeah, the other piece of this- Yeah, the other piece of this that will become part of the conversation, I think, when we bring the ELA adoption is that one of the textbooks that we're looking at is also through this company. So Lynn already asked the question, if we do both of these adoptions through you, what kind of discounts are we going to get on, on the ELA side? So they're, they know we're already thinking along those lines.
Did you get a response?
She's working with her team. She doesn't have the authority to, so.
So what's our bottom line here?
Um, just be, I think, right where we thought it would come in. We knew science would be a lot because of the kits, nine hundred and forty-two thousand.
Which sits right with our million dollar.
Pocket change.
Curriculum budget.
Yep, right on target.
Lynn does a really good job running this process. She's very thorough. The team is very thorough. We had five-ish textbooks to look at right off the bat and narrowed it down immediately to only two because the committee felt like there were things in the other three that weren't appropriate for us to have in our classrooms. So this program has been definitely gone through by the committee.
The feedback from the kids was overwhelmingly Amplify versus the other one. So there were more, I think, close to four hundred responses from students. That, so the classes that piloted and did the observations, those kids were surveyed and just simple questions and Amplify overwhelmingly was the, so if you go into the agenda, you can see some of the feedback, so the qualitative and the quantitative piece. But overwhelmingly it was, it was Amplify. They felt like, you know, the live experiments, it was cool. They loved the simulations. So it just felt like it was super interesting. It's definitely bringing science to life. It's not just talking about it.
A lot of hands on.
Lots of hands on. And that's what I needed, got to see when she was observing the one classroom.
So it looks like we just added twenty kids off of our, on our current enrollment numbers.
Ryan, you want to talk about your projected enrollment formula? That's what I took it off of Brian's question.
But you added, I, you added to each grade level.
Yes, yeah, I put a little buffer in, but the projected numbers I went off of Brian's math.
We just look at different ways to look at enrollment. We look at roll-up numbers, you know, just take the current first graders and, and second, second, third. Also look at sort of averages of how many second graders make it to third. You know, because people move in and move out. It's called a cohort model. Look at that, look at the average of that model, look at the average of the roll-up. Also just look at how we've been growing throughout the last several years. I mean, if you take the one COVID year out, we're about one to one and a half percent every year is pending. So we start to look at all that information and say, okay, what seems reasonable? And we're sort of settling about one, one, about one and a half percent, which would be about eighty kids. Ninety kids more than the next, than this current year. And so that's sort of how we're coming up with the number. We took pure roll-up numbers, we actually would go down students. Because we have a couple.
Big fifth grader?
Yeah, there's a big class that, and a small class coming up. Yeah, so that's sort of dropping off. And so of course, you know, you never know your kindergarten numbers, that's sort of always a guess. You can sort of look at the averages. So it's really just trying to look at historical data and sort of trends and where we think we're going to be. I don't think we're going to be greatly above this year, but I don't think we're going to be less.
I think you're probably right about that. So you, you took kids one and a half percent increase and then added a little to that.
Just a little bit more. I honestly can't tell you where's any rhyme to my math. I either added up to a five or a ten. I wanted a five or a throw. Lisa did ask me about that. So I just wanted a pretty number, so.
So you got it covered then.
Now, the one question I have, I asked specific to the PD, how ongoing is that? The kits are super important to me. And then how the six-year, this, this, are they going to replenish? Because to Lisa's point, there's perishable items that would need to be replenished, but beyond that, not. So is that going to be responsible of the district or are they going to? That's part of it. They'll send us, if we buy emailer and say, hey, we need this for the next year. Are they willing to replenish that on a yearly basis? So I'm waiting for that feedback.
But even if they don't, we do have the building budgets that can handle buying some soil or some salt. If needed.
What do you have, Tiffany?
Uh, I'm still stuck on the E on the health thing. Okay, gotcha. It's gonna, it's gonna bother me, so let's figure it out. Okay. All right, uh, any further questions? Comments, discussions, chit chats? Any quick? All right, then I'll entertain a motion on the science curriculum.
I think my biggest concern there is those kits, whether, because that's like.
It's like three hundred, over three hundred thousand dollars. When I took the rank numbers and quickly added them in my head with my math skills.
My question is, how much is online versus how much is in a book? And, you know, what is that like? How much is actually electronic, you know?
They can do everything without the computer if they wanted to. The simulations obviously are on the computer. But as far as the teaching, they could choose to not turn the phone books on at all and be able to teach.
So the whole program can be taught with a computer sitting on the side.
Yep. Well, but that's, well, we need clarification on that then because on the ed reports, there's, they're, um, their review. And then Amplify comes back and answers their review. And that's not what they're saying. They're saying that they're, you know, a lot of those things are quote, in progress. You know, how do parents help them with learning? Can parents help them with learning at home? No, it's in progress. They don't have access. So I think I need more clarification on how this actually looks. If we have students that need a book and not rely on just the technology piece. It looks like they have worked to answer a lot of those concerns brought up by ed reports. And then the other thing, uh, yeah, I guess I could just look at it more, try to. It looks like there's a, a lot of it is technology driven, you know, it's electronic. So that's, because they do talk about making all their changes on the fly, which is fine, except that we approve one thing and then it becomes something else. Doesn't, but they have a lot of resources for the teachers, so aren't helping them to do anything. I think we definitely need the kit. Question, answer.
Yeah, because that, that's half the price. So those kits aren't in that. So to your question, Michelle, on whether the kit's being included or not is a game changer? Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, if that's the case, then I would motion to table approval of the science curriculum to next meeting.
Second.
Having a motion in the second, all of you ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing then the motion carries. Moving on to the student clubs. Um, the Model UN Club and Model UN Constitution, there's no link to that.
That doesn't yet, doesn't do anything.
Just so.
Yeah.
I don't know what the.
I don't know what happened there.
Um, if you want to table that one, then I can bring that back to the next and pick out why the link didn't work.
Okay. We are still having a problem with not having all this information accessible to read within the blocks that pop up in the, the forms.
So I thought we fixed all of those.
Knowledge Bowl, we can't finish reading their bylaws.
So on my live document, the links for the Model UN work, so something happened when we took, when we made it a PDF.
Okay.
Um, so we'll figure that out.
Same with the GSA club, their state standards that they applied is cut off.
It goes into the next block.
Does it?
Yeah.
They use the form because they, they have it all on there.
Okay.
But the chess club, we can't see to which class is this, is the chess club. This is club aligned.
My through twelfth grade? That number two is grade band?
Nope, I'm looking at number nine. To which class is this club aligned?
Yep, that one box did cut off.
Yeah, you're right. Surveilling is legible on the track. Yeah, knowledgeable. It's missing stuff. I'm sure we're at least. It's cut off too, the bylaws. Yeah. What with the information that we actually can view, is there any conversation, discussions? I want to have on these plates.
No, and I would, I would be ready to make a motion, but I wish that I had the information on the Model UN club. But, um, so I'm going to have to leave that one out of my motion. But I would move to approve the Philosophy Club, the GSA Club, the Knowledge Bowl Club, the THS Chess Club, and the THS Track Club.
So the one you're leaving out was the first?
Yeah, just because they're, you know, we can't get into the information for it.
Couldn't find anything.
I, I'm a little cautioned on the GSA club for the mere fact that when they've added all of these standards, they've attached goals and objectives, which implies that there's curriculum that's not been approved. But then when you flop down to the activities, it doesn't imply that any of their activities are going to support the goals or objectives that they're listing. So I'm a little confused about.
Those are base, those are out of the state standards. That's what they're referencing, is the goals and objectives of those exact standards.
I understand that, but by listing the objective, they're saying by the end of the twelfth grade, the student will be able to, which to me implies that there's a curriculum behind this that hasn't been approved. So if there's no curriculum, then there shouldn't be these objectives, which is absolutely fine. But then they've, you go down to what activities are going to be participating in. And the activities don't align anywhere near their objectives. So that's where I'm a little.
Oh, I think the objectives are coming directly from the state standards and that's why they're listing it the way they are, so.
Well, that I, I, I do understand that. I'm, I'm not, I don't have a problem with that. I have more of a problem with they're listing this as this is what they're going to stand behind. But then what they're saying they're going to do doesn't support what they're actually standing behind. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sort of.
Okay.
I'm bothered by one of the statements up there. It's in the purpose statement. And the one that reads, purpose is to provide safe social environment for that to our school. And the support of like-minded peers who are experiencing similar circumstances. So I have no clue what that means.
Great.
I mean, it's nice, rude reach, but it doesn't tell you anything.
Correct. And, yeah.
Or a check, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah.
May I say something?
Yes.
Um, I don't know if you guys are, when you look at this sheet, um, one of the columns is titled principal action. And if you look at principal action for this particular club, you'll notice that there is no approval there.
Correct.
And that is because while this club has not been in operation, the incidences of bullying and harassment of this particular community within the school have significantly decreased. And there's a concern that if they become active again, that that will start to rise again. So that's the reason for the the non-approval from the principal. And it is in our policy that clubs need to be approved by the principal and then approved by the board?
Yeah, I was just reflecting on our policy.
And I think I probably heard you saying, Cheryl, is that, you know, they've outlined all the things that are to be accomplished based on the Idaho's standards.
Mm-hmm.
But in the write-ups, they don't explain how that's gonna take place.
Correct.
So the two don't match.
No, they don't. And there, I did pull up um last year's application. And there, I mean, there's a lot of the same language, which um GSA specifically is a, is a nationally sponsored um group that I don't know if they're going to be going under those guidelines, which actually goes against our policy. So um I'm just concerned. Especially given the way it's been presented with all of these um standards, goals and objectives, but there's nothing within their application that shows me that they're even working on any of this. It, it just seems kind of um.
Well, and one of the things that we talked about with respect to our policy is that whatever these groups are, need to have some relationship to the academic endeavors in the school.
Correct, correct.
And the leading clause of one of their sentences i- is as a social group.
Correct.
And, but, I thought that's one of the things that we were hearing away from.
Well, we do have a motion on the table, or on the floor, whatever we say. So there is my second. The motion dies. Would another motion like to be brought forward?
I would move the board to approve the Trap Club at Timberlake High School, Chess Club at Timberlake High School, the Knowledge Bowl at Timberlake High School, and the Philosophy Club at Timberlake Middle School.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Next, we have to approve or deny the purchase of a new man lift.
So it's a the amount, or thirty-five thousand, is that what we're being asked to approve then?
That's my assumption.
Yes.
Mr. Ernstein's here.
No, he left.
Um, this is a, this is a device that we rent often.
Mm-hmm.
And he feel, he'd, we would've paid for it by now, just in rental fees, and he hates to continue to throw money at, at this, and would rather just invest in the equipment.
And what about, um, I'm sure maybe our insurance would be the same? You know, do we need any different coverage, more coverage, or liability wise, or?
No.
Um, and what about training? Or do we somehow make sure that people are knowledgeable to operate the equipment, or?
Yeah, I, I guess I can't speak to see if they have official training laws, they definitely um, you know, using similar equipment when they rent.
Right.
And only the guys who know how to build an lift and properly use it do. We could, I could add, you know, that's a great, you know, comment to have a log and things like that, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
The same use. You know, it's a little bit of money upfront, for sure. Um, you save it probably in rent over the course of three or four years, it's not an immediate payback. You know, he would. Mike was thinking his ground vehicles are a little more caught up, and then he could defer, you know, for a year and maybe use this, is what his thoughts were.
Mm-hmm.
But no, that's still a pretty big ask.
And this would be a used piece of equipment.
Yeah, so we.
Vehicles are much more expensive than that.
Correct, yeah, so he's looking at, at getting something used, and um I don't think he has a specific one. I mean, like, they saw it and be available right now, he'd have to start seeing what's truly available, yeah.
Right. They.
Excuse me, I was just gonna ask what fund it would be paid from.
Right now, you know, it's, it would be, you know, we could pay for it through some facility use fees that we've saved up over the years. We could use it from, I think we have a little bit of remnants of the plant facility fund left. And then, you know, after that, it'd be general fund, that's all there. You know, we could get by, but we're made some big purchases recently, definitely wanna, you know, after the levees pass tomorrow, that would be more comfortable.
Yeah, optimistic.
Right.
Um, the statement, Mike would like to forego purchasing a grounds vehicle. Uh, has that been approved for him to purchase a grounds vehicle?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, that, he was just thinking that he's been, we've been able to purchase vehicles every year and been trying to catch the, the fleet up.
Okay.
And we bought a trailer, that would come before the board, but he wouldn't then ask for a grounds vehicle, and this the same year.
I would think if we had a piece of equipment, if they had a piece of equipment like that at their disposal, they would probably be able to do maybe even more things, or.
More proactive, make that stuff.
Yeah, right, instead of thinking about, well, we gotta rent it, and then is one available, and.
Yeah, right.
Every time they have to change the little light bulbs in the parking lots, they have to rent one of these things, so, just, I mean, even just that.
Yeah. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
To have our own equipment.
Yeah, I think it makes sense for multiple reasons. And then what about moving this piece of equipment from, we have trailers, it'll move that, a truck and trailer?
Yeah.
That from school.
Yeah, and when we rent, we have to move it with our, our vehicles, yeah.
Okay.
Well. I don't have anything further. Anybody else? Thank you.
Thanks.
So go ahead and entertain the, the motion regarding the purchase of a new man lift.
Well, I would move to approve the thirty-five thousand dollar.
Up to?
Up to thirty-five thousand dollars, if they're asking for, for the man lift.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. Moving on to the course proposals, uh, for approval or denial, these will be for next year, correct, correct? There's a CS game design course proposal and a podcasting and audio production course proposal. Which I think they're both kinda cool.
It's exciting to see us expanding our elective opportunities to give kids a chance to kinda dabble in some different areas, to see what interests them prior to going off to college.
Yeah. Um, question. On the podcasting and audio production, the requirement that the student provide a laptop um, and headphones, is that? Are we allowed to do that?
Well, I don't think we can tell somebody that they can't participate in the class because they don't have one, so we correct it, we would have to.
Well, what the comment is, is if you don't have the laptop, then there's other roles that you can do within the course, which is, you know, obviously true, but if nobody has a laptop, which I know is probably never ever gonna be the case, but I'm just, you know, look at the worst case scenario.
Well, some kids have Chrome, Chromebook as a laptop, and I, I don't believe.
Right. I don't think you can do more of that out there.
Mr. Hoffman is here, and this is from your school.
Um, they should be able to get those on, and the only thing that would be included in running that software is IT. Like, he would have to okay um the use of YouTube and SoundCloud. iTunes would be different, um, but Spotify, they're not familiar with DistroKid. Um. But they should be somewhat compatible, or maybe they can find something that's compatible with the Chromebook. Um, might be other issues as far as hardware or something like that, but.
And then as far as headphones go, we do ask, like, even at the elementary level, the kids provide their own headphones.
Okay, okay.
So you don't even.
We do need to, but we don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you.
So these will both be credit classes?
Mm-hmm. Elective.
Full credit, elective classes.
Yes.
And what school is that?
Lakeland.
Lakeland is asking.
I think they look like pool classes.
Yeah, I don't think they got most of this with their, um, I know Timberlake has a Tiger TV, I forget what Lakeland's called.
Hello Hawks.
Yeah, don't they have a room, a sound room and all that already, that they have a lot of this equipment, or this kind of function?
That's a Mr. Hoffman question.
Repeat the question one more time.
Uh, sure, I was just curious, I'm familiar with uh the Tiger TV room, the production room, and what they have up there, and I'm not familiar with what Lakeland's room looks like, that they house over there.
It's very similar, we have, I mean, it's uh probably not as big, but um we have all the technology for that, for the most part, to get the bare bones done.
Okay.
You know, with their green wall painted instead of a green curtain, or whatever, but uh they seem to be getting by. The space is just not as big, we'd like something bigger, for sure, but we don't have space at least for that, but um, for the most part, it's, it's functional, I would say.
Are you thinking that they need a special space for mixing audio and those kinds of things?
Oh, no, I was just wondering if they had, I didn't know if they had actual sound room, or if they had,
Oh, I see.
You know, I wasn't familiar with what they had over there.
No, nothing that fancy.
We'll just take over Mr. Hoffman's office.
That'll be the new center.
He's never in his office anymore.
Right.
One more question, uh, we have two different instructors that have offered these proposals, what, what's a general class, or what, what do those teachers usually teach?
Joshua Ballard is a um science teacher. And Lucas Hudson is a computer science teacher.
So. Mr. Ballard is a science teacher.
Does he have additional endorsements?
And.
We'll make sure he's properly endorsed.
Well, my question is if he teaches this class, for what, one semester, or a whole year?
It, I believe it's a semester class.
It's a semester class.
But would be taught? What would he, what would he teach the other semester?
It'd, it'd probably still be a podcast, but it'd be just a new, um, new kids infer in that, that uh, some next semester, so you'd get new kids.
Okay, so we're not losing a science class in the process here.
Well, potentially we are.
Well, that's a concern.
It sure is, yeah. Um, and, and so this may not happen, depending on the number size of our classes. So if we need a, um, depending on how many sections of science we absolutely need, and if our class sizes jump up significantly, um, then this want is what we call a want, not necessarily a need, would probably take the backseat.
Okay.
Yeah.
Clear understanding of how all that works.
Is it?
Mr. Hoffman, the projection that you, on that uh secondary projection sheet
Yeah.
for science, did you did you write your number of um periods based on running this class or not running that class?
That's a good question, um. I can tell you. Give me a minute.
If it was based on running this class, then these class sizes for next year look fine.
It would.
And this could be.
Yeah, Mike, Mike, we just don't wanna overload science classes, or, you know, end up pushing a science class aside for something that's, you know, like, in this time.
But if, but if we get it approved, and there's an opportunity to run it, then we have it, we have it in our arsenal.
Then everyone understands that.
Yeah, Lisa, that's what that podcast.
It, it is what, so with the, with Joshua teaching this class and not teaching one period of science, he still has, his science numbers are twenty-five to one.
Okay. Good. I move approval of both proposals.
Second. I think a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Daring none, the motion carries. Moving on to the administration's recommendation for the twenty-twenty-three valedictorian and salut-
Saludatory.
Saludatory at Timberlake and Lakeland High Schools. I don't really think there's much to talk about, but if you all like to have a conversation, can. Okay, then all entertain a motion.
I move to approve administration's recommendation for the twenty-twenty-three valedictorian and salutatoryans at Timberlake and Lakeland High Schools.
Second, having a motion in a second, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Daring none, the motion carries. Uh, moving on to the contract with the, with a trained threat assessment clinician. My understanding that this would be utilized when our person is not available?
Correct, so we have a school psychologist who is trained to do this, however, we are, um, running on, uh, we don't have as many school psychologists as we actually need. And so, uh, she doesn't, she's not always readily available to help out. This would be, um, very rarely used because it really is only used if the level of threat is determined by the school team to be high. It's one more prong of information before we come to the board with that student. And, uh, we have struggled to find somebody who, um, has the credentials needed to be able to do that. Uh, we actually brought somebody in this year to train our, is a trained trainer for threat assessments, and we trained, um, the admin team this year. And he was willing to help us out, but he's in Seattle, so after all of his interviews and those kinds of things would be done over the computer, which is, when you're dealing with like high-level threat, is not effective. Um, so this, um, this person is from the area and, um, he, that, that psychologist from Seattle was, um, his normal hourly rate for a school district was a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. He was willing to give us a deal at one-twenty-five, but this is, this is even less than that. I would say maybe we would use this person once a year based on the last couple of years. Um, it's very rare that we get to that high level, but it, it would help our administrators feel more comfortable, um, having somebody with that level of training take a look at the situation.
So this individual is local?
Yeah.
And the background of this individual?
Um, is extensive, I, I, I can, I don't have this, um, all of his different credentials, but he's definitely trained in threat assessment, um.
Okay.
Yeah. Works as a therapist right now.
So is he in a private practice somewhere?
I don't believe he's in a private practice, uh, he's not, he looks, it's Kelsey Badger's husband.
Kinda wonder about that.
Yeah, yeah.
How long does it take to do one of these assessments typically?
It could take, um, well, for this part of the assessment, a couple hours.
Say a couple hours.
Yeah. So it's not an astronomical amount of money and it's not even guaranteed that it would be every year that we would need it. It would just be nice to know that we have somebody we can turn to if we need that level of expertise.
Okay. Okay.
We would just run him through as a vendor, um, and do the ten ninety-nine. Um, so there wouldn't be a retainer, we wouldn't write a contract with him, it would just be a vendor and then an invoice.
Typical backgrounds, background, circumstances like this.
We would fingerprint and do all of them. Anytime we're gonna have somebody working on one with a kid, we'll do that.
Did we reach out into the community at all to see if there was any other options?
Um, we have certainly asked different agencies and have had, I mean, we've been looking for two years. Do you know of somebody?
That's not my question.
Okay.
I move we approve the recommendation to hire, let's say, Badger on an hourly basis to do threat assessment screens.
I would rather see a request for, um. I mean, I know for bigger stuff, we do requests for proposals and quotes and, and stuff, I just. I wanna make sure that we're giving, um. I get that it's taken two years, but, or that you've been looking for two years. And this is the first I've necessarily heard of, of this either coming about, and I've been on board for two years, so. I'd like to know what organizations, agencies have been contacted to know further, who might be available to do these.
Yeah, I think that's fair. So no second, that means the motion dies? Any other motion on this matter?
Hmm? Or some direction?
I think what Trustee Bain just said is pretty good direction, just who else is out there in the community, who have we talked to, um. You know, what are?
Kind of specific, what are, what are all the options? I just wanna know that. We're not just grabbing family members to. To hire and stuff.
Is there a particular, I can come back with that information, is there a particular process that you, you would like us to follow?
We just put it out for.
I guess probably everything else.
Do we put it out for like a job listing?
Well, I think what we need, number one, is a description of what we're looking for, just like we do everything else, like what are, what are the expectations of this person? How often do we think we're gonna need this person? You know, what are we expecting them to fulfill, like, you know, they're gonna provide, I forget what those forms are, the threat assessment forms, you know, blah, blah, blah. I think we just need more, um, specifics of what, or the agency, person or agency, it might even be an agency that, you know, has personnel on staff or.
Who, yeah, who has people certified for doing threat assessments?
Are you guys looking for an R F Q, request for qualification basically?
Yeah, pretty much that, and then what our expectation is the district where we're looking. Thank you.
As long as she calls it an R F Q and not a. I just hate it when people make words out of acronyms. I'm okay with acronyms, but when people make words.
Can you do that again?
No.
That was funny.
Moving on to the discussion items. I would like to note, you're doing incredibly well tonight, just throwing that out there for everyone.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So doesn't this heritage health provide mental assessments?
I don't know.
I don't know if they do or not.
Well, this says they do help behavioral health services, um.
When we reached out.
Mental and behavioral issues.
When we reached out to them, this was not something that they were.
They just didn't wanna do the other stuff?
Necessarily.
Hard stuff.
I don't, and it could, I don't know if they don't have somebody specifically trained in that at that point, but I can reach back out to them. And if we're looking to do an R F Q, I think the first step would just be to line that out with the board as far as what we're looking for specifically and then just go through that process.
But I think the board actually needs guidance from you because like, uh, Trustee Bain said, this is the first time that we've been told that there's a problem, that we need to address this, we have no knowledge, so.
Okay.
So are we good with moving into discussion?
All right.
You don't mind?
Okay.
Thanks.
First item up for discussion is the I S B A services and agreement. As a board, we do need to. Are you too done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. We do need to, uh, just look at, um, what we're receiving from I S B A for what we're paying them. And is this, uh, good use of our taxpayer dollars? And, um, you know, what benefit are we actually receiving from them? Did you need to say?
I just got the chills, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, 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 that's okay. Making sure. Um, it appears, which I did not know this, cause this was not what was told to me previously from the prior superintendent, but, um, apparently our fees, uh, our membership dues that we paid in July of twenty-twenty-two, is ten thousand twenty dollars and thirty-four cents. Which is a lot of dollars, uh, for a political action committee, which is exactly what Idaho School Board Association is. There is apparently an insurance dividend that we can receive, which we've asked in the past about our, um, insurance coverage. Um, we weren't given any information that we, with whatever we pay, that we get a dividend back. What's it called? It's not B N O, is it? What is it called, I can't remember.
Liability D N O?
D N O. Um, cause yeah, Brian gave us that information.
Directors and officers, I don't know what else we, we have. Liability, I'm sure we have, yeah, I don't know that we've ever seen a list, but.
Yeah, no, no. But that is one thing that the board's asked before in the past about, cause the board covered it under insurance and we are. Um, Mr. Wallace provided that information to us. But I didn't know that it was through I S B A. Is that accurate?
Mm-mm, we're under I. Our insurance is I C R I P.
Yes, we're, we're with I C R I P, but we, um, are going through the broker, Morton and Associates, who's associated with I S B A. I S B A is sort of like, I S B A has some of those purchasing cooperatives, like buy board and things like that. So, school districts who are going through I C R I P mostly go through the I S B A channel, uh, for the pricing and things like that.
Okay. So do we have any idea what our pricing would be if we were not to be going through I S B A?
No, we would have to, you could certainly, you could go out and, uh, ask for, you know, quotes and bids and things like that. There's a couple other insurance companies in the state who provide that. You know, I C R I P is obviously the big one for school districts, fire districts, cities, counties, so.
Okay.
I don't understand where our numbers come from either on the breakdown, because they said the dues amount was ten thousand twenty dollars. And then in September, we received a check in the amount of seven thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars for the insurance dividend. That means the district paid five thousand one hundred sixty-six.
The number doesn't, I saw that too.
No.
Of net dues.
Net difference between the two is two thousand eight hundred twenty-four dollars, not five thousand one hundred sixty-six, so.
Which I don't understand what the difference between a net dues and a gross dues is, other than a gross dues is probably a higher dollar.
The gross would be the ten.
The gross would be the ten, and she's saying that the net amount is after the, is after a dividend, or, you know, something subtracted from that, and that's, that's not what that totals. It's not five thousand dollars, but.
Can we verify the first two figures? Did we actually pay ten thousand two hundred and did we receive a check for seventy-one ninety-six?
We definitely paid ten, I, you know, I could go back to last year and see our deposits. I'm sure we did, usually when we've gotten that in the past, we credit our insurance expense, so.
Does that sound like a ballpark figure to you?
Yeah, it changes every year depending on how the cooperative does. So, yeah.
Depends on looking losses in our state law.
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but I imagine that it's been that high in the past, so definitely ballpark. But we can, we can get that information.
Well, and the policy services we receive, uh, we actually pay for, it's not part of our dues, it's in addition to.
And the training we have to pay for.
We have to pay the additional.
Right, the training we pay for, and then allegedly there's a reimbursement at some point.
From the state.
That's from the state though, not I S B A, so.
Right. Right, so we're still paying for, even though they, I noticed that too, they made this really nice little list, but it's not accurate, cause we're still, they offer these services, but you still have to pay for the service.
Right.
I was trying, we did have this discussion, I remember, um. I was trying to find, uh, that in one of our meetings. Cause I do remember it was coming up for payment and you had to make a decision, so, yeah, in twenty-twenty, it looks like we did pay them, uh, nine thousand seven hundred eighty-eight dollars.
Yeah, that was the dues then.
Mm-hmm.
I think it's for all the emails, like.
That could be. But the reality is, I S B A is a political action committee, um, that advocates on behalf of all school districts. The north is, obviously has a different perspective on a lot of things than the south does. So I, I don't, I don't understand the benefit we're receiving by our alignment with I S B A. Other than we pay money, and then we pay more money, and we pay more money to get services from them. So I don't really know, um, if that's a good use of our funding.
Yeah, in twenty, uh, so in our board meeting in June first of twenty-twenty, um, because we asked, we've been asking the question.
Yeah.
This is the first time we've ever actually got a number.
Right.
Uh, you know, dollars, um, because there they mentioned nothing about the insurance, um, they just simply mentioned, you know, although, remember, we get the update service for the policies at no charge, but other than that.
And superintendent searches, but we don't need that, so.
I'm not going anywhere.
Now is it professional development?
Don't say that.
She might win the lottery, we don't know.
And I'm going with her.
So let's see, so then they told us that there was, um, oh yeah, see, it's seven thousand dollars previously to get their policies. Yeah, blended rewrite.
Mm-hmm.
You could buy the whole manual for two thousand dollars.
Right.
In Word format.
Do you have to be a member to purchase it? Do you have to be a member to purchase it?
No.
Do you have to be a member to go to any of the conferences? What do we pay for going to the conference per person?
They used to have, they used to have a non-member tuition.
Yeah, they did.
And it was, it was significantly higher, but not $10,000 higher.
But to make, make up the difference between going as a non-member and.
So we can look it up and see, but I don't think so.
Well, and we paid to go to Day on the Hill. The dues to go to Day on the Hill, which we don't start to. We can go to Day on the Hill without having to pay to go talk to the legislators. So I mean, it's.
Does that even matter if you pay?
I don't think so. Maybe.
On the, on the insurance portion that they pay, is that like for errors and omissions, is that what that is?
It's an assumption.
They don't say.
They don't say, it just states, one of the key benefits of ISBA is the option to use ISBA property and liability insurance plan through Morton's.
Which is what you just said.
Right, which is only available to ISBA members, implying that if we're not their member, we can't use them.
Well, you wouldn't, you obviously wouldn't get.
You just wouldn't get the ref, the rebate.
So ISBA insurance plan helps school districts meet their insurance and risk management challenges by offering property, liability, and travel insurance. One benefit of this program is the opportunity for participating districts and charters to receive dividends based upon the claims experience of the group.
So. Trustee Vane, I'm looking at the registration for the 2022 ISBA Annual Convention. ISBA member for the early bird was 550 and then other is 600. So it looks like there's a $50 difference.
$50 difference.
Yeah. So it seems to me that our membership helps pay for discounted pricing for everything else. Not trying to be sarcastic, but it seems like that.
The benefit we receive, I would be curious to find out what the pricing difference for our insurance is.
Yeah.
Through this versus not through it.
That would be good to know.
I'm going to go way out on a limb and say you cannot buy insurance on your home for $10,000 for the school district.
But we're not paying $10,000. That's our ISBA dues, that's not the insurance dues, that's the ISBA membership dues that we paid.
Well, so then I guess we need to find out what insurance we're receiving from Morton and Company, what it covers.
That's the ICRA insurance funneled through that agency.
I get that. So what it is exactly that they're covering and then do a market search to find out what it would cost without going through ISBA. To see what the economic value is in paying $10,000 on top of the premiums we already pay. Because I can only imagine the dues are going to go up next year, because they seem to be going up every year.
Like everything else.
Correct. Not that it's, you know, just a thing to do, but yeah, goes up every year.
Well, now this letter is, contradicts what they told us in the past, so now the most current letter says that the policy update is only offered to members for nominal fee. Really? It was a couple years ago, so that's.
Yeah. Well, and in their defense, they did go through a significant overhaul of the administration, so. So Lisa, can you. Direct Mr. Wallace?
I love directing Mr. Wallace.
To, to check into that information?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, goodie.
I'm good.
Are we ever taking advantage of the legal services?
Our four hours.
I did once and I got my head chewed off for it, so I didn't.
Yeah, you're a problem, I remember that.
And I agree. I got my head chewed off. I'm not allowed to call legal services. So you know, trial and error, I like to learn.
You can do it now.
It's out there.
It was free, it was a good thing.
The reason I ask that is because this is like all professional organizations, they offer certain varied kinds of services. And they're as good as you take advantage of the services.
Correct.
And if you don't take advantage of them, then you kind of are wasting your money, but if you do take advantage, then you get something for yourself.
Right.
Well, and it's good to have listed out exactly what services they provide. It would be a little bit more transparent of them to say what the cost of each of the, you know, the policy services and stuff like that.
Legal services is $600.
Yeah. We know that.
We do know that one.
So I'm on their, I'm on the ISBA website and when you go to their policies, they're all listed right there and I'm not logged in. And I have access to every one of their model policies.
Really?
Yeah, I'm just clicking away and finding, like they have the whole 1,000 section and all the policies there. So, and I'm not logged in, I don't think it can read that I'm from a school district.
I don't know how you put a value on their lobbying efforts, but obviously they're, they're a prime spokesman on behalf of education at the state legislature. I don't know how it is now, but you know, I was a certain tenant and we were always a step behind the ISBA in terms of lobbying effort. ISBA and the Idaho Association of Cities are about on par in terms of lobbying activity and the weight they carry.
Yeah, that's what I would, had talked about their blended policy for. Did you get that recently?
A few months ago.
Okay. That was on the ISBA policy rewrite options that you had pulled up.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Thank you. Okay, do we need to have any further conversation? I think it would be more probably prudent to have the insurance numbers. Within the discussion. Are we good with moving on?
I am.
Moving on to the. Dates has spoken. Lakeland MOU for Mental Health Services. I'm just curious, this is not an action item, this is just for discussion, but disagreement shows us entering into it in February of 2023. And it's for the 2324 school year. Is this something we're going to need to be taking action on at some point? Do we know?
Yes, so Lynn can speak to this probably better than I can, but our board asked for some changes in language to the MOU, which then even though they were minor changes, requires a full legal analysis of the entire document, which is what you have now before you. And that's based on the requested changes that the board made.
Well, there is a lot added into it that was, was not there before in looking at the red line. So I do appreciate us being provided that.
Yes. So this. Because it's, it's, there's a lot of information there, it's a discussion tonight and then we can have, take action on it in April. If you are so inclined.
Anybody have any comments or thoughts on this revised, completely revised MOU? On Facebook. What's that?
Oh, this time.
Okay. Would you have any comments or?
Well, I was glad that they gave us the marked up version.
Yeah. Yeah, because there's some significant changes on it.
Yeah, yeah, a lot.
Yeah. Well, so if we have no discussion, we can move on to the mental detecting wands protocol.
And this is a rough draft, at, at least a start in place. I would, I feel a little bit like the protocol is out of step a bit. I feel like we need the policy first.
Right.
And then the protocol needs to be written to address the policy.
I'd agree.
But we did put some thoughts together, just the board had asked for that at the last meeting.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate the highlighted words, because of them, I'm like, yeah, we probably word that a little differently. Anybody have any?
Is this, is this far out from somewhere? No?
Nope.
Total freehand to.
I'm curious why we would say that, that when mental detecting wands will be used on female students, the search will be performed by a female staff member. There's no mention the other way around.
It should be.
We can put equally.
We can put both in there.
Yeah.
All of our armed district safety specialists who would be wielding them are male. So that's why you got left out because they would be the ones doing it and so if it's a male, they would be the one, but we can specify that within. But again, it was hard to craft that without the policy in place, so. I'm sure we're missing things that, that might be important.
Any further discussion on protocols?
No, that wasn't my only question.
Okay.
Comment?
No.
Okay.
Could I then ask the clerk to, to put this policy on your, to be considered list policies?
Sure, you can ask her to do that.
Doesn't mean she couldn't do it.
Wait in line. I know there's a lot. And we did, I think we did provide some sample policies from out of state. I don't think we had any that.
Yeah.
Portland still has not gotten theirs, and their person left, so I'm not sure.
Oh, fun.
Yeah.
Their policy person or?
Their safety person.
Oh, really?
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the job descriptions follow-up. Thank you.
Yeah, it looks awesome.
This is amazing.
Yeah, Morton did the majority of that as far as we came up with a template for classified on what we wanted it to look like in the verbiage at the bottom and then the template for certified. And we just want to talk about it in one.
It looks so good.
Yeah.
Looks crazy.
And then the blue highlights has, where there's some sort of board responsibility attached to it, so for you guys to review.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I love it. It just looks like we care.
Looks very nice.
I like the district logo in my header on the top.
Yeah.
It looks clean.
Thank you.
We got stuff leaving the way that. Recess behavior.
Just because when you were here, there was teachers.
Supervisor.
Not teachers.
If you're not a teacher, then you're the other.
Classified staff, that was it. No, there was more than that.
I'm sure.
Yeah, the only others.
Go ahead.
I would say the only other suggestion I would have, it looks great, is, is the running number of pages, so one of so many in case they get separated, you know, at the bottom in the footer.
Oh, I gotcha.
Because they're numbered, but it doesn't tell me, you know.
Our.
Page three, four, or whatever, yeah.
Okay.
And our district safety specialists are listed as armed guards.
Well, it's great. Very nice. We have all these titles and then we have teacher. Yeah. We need to change that, so they're no longer teachers, they need to be academic engineers. There you go.
That's pretty of a brand.
Child wrinklers.
Very nice. Okay, any further comment on the job description? Oh, okay, so the last thing is staff support. I asked for that to be added to the agenda and there isn't anything attached there, but we're getting ready to go into testing. And so I would like the board to support our schools, our teachers and all that they're doing within the testing realm. With like. Not cookies. Donuts?
No.
Chart, chartreuse, what is it?
Charcuterie.
Chartreuse, whatever, meats and cheeses and grapes and maybe some olives.
And maybe some olives.
I don't know. Whatever goes on those little board things with the meats and the cheeses, just something to let them know that we appreciate their dedication to the timing of testing because it is cumbersome. Yeah.
I know. I, I say do it.
Okay.
Has Rebecca already volunteered to make such boards?
She ran out of the room, did you know? So.
No, we can.
Superland Foods, they have great.
Deli trays.
And, and olives and all that, they can, if you told them.
The olives are on there now.
They would know.
Yeah. They do wing trays too, they're really good.
Just, I mean, it was.
No, I think that's a good idea.
Let's do something a little more substantial, so. Yeah, I think that would be really good. Just, yeah, with cards from the board that just say, thanks.
So our schools will start testing the week of our board meeting.
Okay.
In April.
Okay.
So if we have the cards here for you, for each sign for the other schools, then we can deliver the boards that week.
That'd be great. Yeah, that'd be great.
All right, I have a question along that lines. All right. I have a question along that lines. Pizza's fairly inexpensive to send. I mean, I think Domino's, you can get a huge pizza for like five bucks.
True.
You know, I just think this.
The school district gets a discount.
They're so packed full that I just imagine these, this might become their only meals for the day, wherever the sitting in the in the break room or whatever, you know, wherever they're at, where they can just grab something by.
Or even some kind of continental breakfast spread where they can grab muffins, fruit, that kind of.
But that's Rebecca thing. It's a Costco.
Well, I just think it would be important, I I want it to be important that we let all of our staff know that we're we know what they're going through and appreciate it.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay. On that note, we're needing board member input for future items.
I have an item to to throw. I I'm concerned after having read the article in the paper the other day about the legislature not taking any action on our problem with the liquid taxes and penalties and so forth. We don't have an update on that. Maybe somebody can provide some information of where, as I understand it, the cities are taking the lead in terms of court. My concern is is does that leave us as being not interested in the problem? I I really think we should be doing it. That's where I'm headed with this whole motion.
Okay.
And I can do some follow-up, but Leon Doucet, city administrator for Rathdrum, was in Boise to testify when that bill was either before the House or the Senate. And it was tabled or not voted on. So it didn't even make it to the floor.
Yeah, the attitude seemed to be it's not our problem, but somebody else figured it out. And it appears that the only option we have at this point is legal action because the county guy that we've got is gonna keep the money otherwise.
Yeah, wouldn't that be in the opinion by the AG? Wouldn't that be his job to sort out?
If he could do it, but if nobody asks him to do it, he won't do it.
I say we ask him to do it.
Maybe we all should be asking him to do it, cause I think that's technically would be part of his job.
I don't know.
I think it's gonna become law since it was gonna happen.
Yeah.
I thought legal action was already moving forward with the city postfalls.
He tends, he tends it. There wasn't any action taken by the legislators.
So you're saying it's gonna go to court?
Yes.
I believe so.
Well, I hope it does. My concern is if the judge understands it's not just the three cities that have a problem.
Right. Right.
All the tax agencies have schools, including school districts. You know, and you're losing seventy-five or a hundred thousand dollars a year, whatever amounts to.
Well, the fact that.
It's a teacher.
And, yeah, right, it's a teacher.
So I just feel like we should have more engaged with.
Yeah.
I agree.
I'm serious.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. Not only that, the way I look at it is that they just did whatever they wanted to do with taxpayers' money because the taxpayers voted to give the district, you know, these levies and then they just decided, well, we didn't need that portion.
Right. Arbitrarily and appreciatively.
Yeah. Right, yeah, they just, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I wholeheartedly agree. That maybe we need all three, all, I mean, only have three districts.
Do we have any issue when that's gonna go to court?
I can ask our legal counsel at the city and find out what they know.
I mean, we're not in a position to take any action here, but I.
We can write letters, so we can, you know. Yeah, and I don't think that the that the general public has a good understanding of how the schools are affected. Cause we just sort of got glossed over in everything that's been written. They, you know, they don't understand that, you know, it's their students' money was taken from them. Right? And however, you know, everything they voted on for the levy money to be used with, you know, that was all set aside and then they just decided schools didn't need it, even though the taxpayers voted for the schools to have it.
Right.
You know? That's the part I don't get.
I I don't think the legislators really understand it either. Maybe they do and they just don't care. But they certainly gave a cold shoulder to the whole motion. So the only option we have is to take legal action somehow.
Right, so then legislators may. Future agenda. A future agenda item would just be a follow-up on the tax debacle for like these interests. Anything else?
No, that was me tapping my feet. I realized that sounded kind of vendor. Sorry.
Oh, I'm, I know we're gonna be busy with testing and all that, but I'd like a better understanding of how much time do we spend on testing in a district of, you know, data gathering, data collection? I'm just curious. You know, what what we're actually doing as far as testing at all the different grade levels. You know, what tests are these? Are they? You know, the schools, students, the staff, everybody subjected to all these different tests. I'm just curious as to how many tests are we actually doing? You know, how much time are we spending there?
Which is why the elementary wanted the trimesters, cause it takes one whole quarter's worth of assessing. All right.
So we test for a quarter?
No, but at the end of each quarter, there are multiple assessments given to go to get.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay.
Because elementary are, they're on a standards-based report card, so every little standard is measured and there's an assessment that's attached to it.
Right, right. Okay.
And so by going to trimester, when we do it, three times a year, so.
Okay.
But every third through eighth grader takes an ELA and a math test. And there's two, it's two parts. So that's four testing sessions.
For that's for ISATs.
For ISATs.
Plus the science for fifth, eighth, and.
So for those grade levels, it's five. Then you add K through three. So third grade has all those four assessments for ISAT plus an additional IRI. IRI is fast. It's thirty to forty minutes. ISAT on an average, a test, if I'm a, and I can only speak to elementary, but if I'm a third grader to a fifth grader, easily four hours in the testing lab. Easy for one test. Several of them do not finish in a day.
For one. That's ridiculous. Yep, several will take more than one day.
It's, but the state department will tell you it's, you know, people are done. It's rare that kids. They did shorten it, so it has gotten easier, but it it's it's long.
And we're asking eight-year-olds to type a five paragraph essay for their performance task for English.
But after COVID, they shortened it. So thus far, we've done the shortened version, so more kids are getting finished in a, you know, three to four hour period, but it's it's a lot. Their breaks are done.
It's educational practice, in my opinion.
It's ridiculous.
No teacher in their right mind would ever create a test that would take kids that long to complete.
Right.
And expect them to sit there for that long. And they, they're very particular about the breaks that kids take and whether or not they can talk to somebody else while they're on their break. And, I mean, it's it's horrible.
And it doesn't give us any usable data.
Yeah, SAT doesn't.
We don't, we get, it's an autonomy, basically.
And just remember, ISAT, the standards changed. ISAT has not, so
Right.
they're not aligned this year.
Right, right, yeah.
A lot of issues. Can we go back to the tax thing?
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned writing a letter to Attorney General Labrador.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something you want me to do? You you mentioned it and then you went on to something else. I can work with Leon at Rathdrum City and maybe find out who your city administrator is in postfalls.
She's got a injury.
And maybe we could write something collaboratively, so it's coming from cities and districts.
Sure.
I think that, what about Cortlande and postfalls? I mean, how do they feel about it? Are they not?
Districts.
The school districts, are they not concerned or have you heard anything?
I have not heard any. We have a meeting this Thursday, so I can.
I think it would be much more impactful if the school districts made their, well, yes, we agree from the cities, but separate, yeah, because
Separate cities.
I really don't see, our impact is not the same as the city, you know? The the impact they make to education and to their own community is outrageous. You know?
So I'll check, I will see both of those superintents on Thursday. So I'll check and see if you'd be willing to write a letter together.
Early on, we got an indication that the school districts maybe didn't need to to join that loss of.
From our legal.
But I, see, I don't understand that kind of legal advice. So I think I'd like to hear from our attorney
No, that's wrong.
why we shouldn't and if we would choose to, how would that work?
Do you want me to reach out too?
I would say yes.
I'll try to.
You said six hundred first.
I'll try to keep it short and sweet.
I mean, obviously, we don't do anything. We don't spend any money, but.
Get any money, but if you don't.
I think our silence is good.
No, the silence is not good at all. Squeaky Leo. Okay, any further teacher topics for discussion that we discussed during that segment?
The warm weather's coming, so I guess we're gonna have a barbecue sometime. Bob's gonna do that for us. He's gonna organize all that.
Try again, Bob.
With that, on that note, I need a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six one B and J.
So move.
We've got two so moves. All righty, we need a roll call vote.
Chair Thompson?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gresson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones? Trustee Bane?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Graham?
Yes.
We're in executive session. It is beat forty-two.
I won, which means I lost. That's how Lynn does her stuff. Have a good night, you guys.
Good night, dressy.
What? So we've come out of executive session. There is no post-executive session actions that need to be taken. We'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting. It's ten twenty.